We'll call tonight's meeting of the Villa Park City Council together here. Jared, would you like to call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Mills.
Here.
Councilwoman Polly.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fasenelli.
Present.
Mayor Barnett.
Present. And is there anyone would like to lead us in the pledge out there so I don't have to pick someone? Oh, that's a great idea.
Kate.
Kate, how would you like to lead us in the pledge, Kate?
Ah.
Don't worry, we'll follow you, we do it all the time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, here's my little note, if we can all flip our cellphones off, that will help, I will do mine. All right, for those of you that have come and would like to speak on an issue, if it's not agendized, it's not listed on the agenda there somewhere, then we'll get you up there first, and you've got three minutes, I think, is our time, and if you'll just identify yourself with your name and address, you can, you can, did I miss something?
Are you going to do presentations first?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm skipped. What happened here? Okay, I apologize, I got a little, I got, yeah, I got a little out of, I got a little out of order. Yeah, no, no, I got it, I got it, thank you though. Okay. I guess we have our city council reporting on closed session.
Yes, the city council went into closed session this evening to do a public employee performance evaluation for the city manager, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. I've now figured out what I did. I gave you the instructions for your non-agendized matters to come up, but they don't come up yet in order, so I apologize for that confusion. If we got someone from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation wants to give us an update? Jill, looks like Jill's going to do it.
No, Andy and I are going to do it.
Oh, okay. We anxiously await your news.
I'm Jill Kuli, and I am the Community Services Foundation Communications Director with a bad case of laryngitis. Anyway, I want to tell you some exciting things are going to be happening here in May, before that maybe two, and I'm wearing this red, white, and blue because I want to remind you that the Great American Picnic is coming up at Irvine Park on, it's going to be on May 25th from 11:30 to 4:30. Now, it's going to be a blast from the past, and lots of weather wonderful things, too. We're going to have this, a car show again, we'll be having activities such as the VPE and Serrano Tug of War, that's always a great competition. You know, last year, we had Brad in the dunk tank, and it looks like it's something that gets passed down, so Rick...
I was there, I was in that tank.
Well, guess what, I guess that's the blast from the past because we're probably going to get to do that for you again, but we're going to have some Systems of Rock Entertainment, and I think it's going to be a really fun day with lots of wonderful new carnival games this year, and some great vendors, and lots of prizes and surprises, so I hope all of you will come out there, and the good part is, the price is only $10 for immediate family, and with that, The Corner Bakery is donating free kids' meals tickets to those kids in your family, and they're also giving us piles of cookies to give out for prizes, so can't beat The Corner Bakery for that. But, before that even happens, we're going to be celebrating dogs in Villa Park. We're going to have the First Annual Second 2K Dog Walk, excuse me, and it's going to be down in the Fitch and Ranch Road area, and the registration fee is $15 a dog, and it includes one of the Walk With A Friend t-shirts. So you'll get to exercise with your dog, meet other dog owners, and you'll have a howling good time, I promise. If you look on our foundation website, you'll find the information about all that. Probably the most exciting things that the foundation gets to do is to be able to share the gifts that we've received from so many of our members in the community and the sponsors with other schools, so, Andy, come on down, because we have received some grant requests, and you can tell about the one from Villa Park Elementary if you would, and I'll come over there and take a picture.
I'm very privileged tonight to be able to present this grant that the Villa Park Community Services Foundation voted to grant to Villa Park Elementary, funds to go ahead and pay for their flutophone. What are they called now, not flutophones?
The recorders.
Recorders, I'm sorry, that's my old school. They have a program, we're in fifth grade, they have a teacher come in and teach the children how to read music, play the recorders, and we buy the recorders for the students. As you know, music was pulled from the elementary schools many years ago, and the Home and School League there at VPE does go ahead and pay for a music teacher to come in, and we'll pay for this, so we're so happy. This is Kate Kuli, the Home and School League president couldn't be there, so we have a wonderful stand in here, and we're pleased to present this. Do you want us to come up here?
Right over here, by all means.
Is it?
There's Miss Kate.
How much money is it, Kate?
$700. This is to pay for everyone's recorder, so we're very happy to do this.
That is great.
How many recorders does that buy?
We started this program years ago, it was only $500, I guess the recorders have gone up. You know, one that somebody had, you know...
Yeah, no kidding.
There's about 110 students in the fifth grade.
Thank you, may I take this?
So that buys about 110?
But that's not all. We have more money. Many, many, many years ago, we've had some tragic accidents on grad night, and the Grad Night Group was founded. I was one of those privileged people to be part of that, to save kids from bad choices on grad, the night of the graduation. And so, ladies, come on down, we have two people from Villa Park High School, and I'll let you tell them, tell you what the plans are.
Where are we facing?
Oh, right there.
I'm Debbie Myers, and Lisa Campow, we are the Grad Night co-chairs for Villa Park High School, PFSO, and this year Grad Night is going to be actually at Magic Mountain. The students voted overwhelmingly to go to amusement park, they're going to have their grad day on Monday of grad week at Knott's Berry Farm, they're going to have their senior breakfast on Tuesday, Wednesday they have their rehearsal, Thursday's the graduation ceremony, and immediately after the graduation ceremony, they'll meet back at the high school in the gym, and we'll be taking them up in buses to celebrate their graduation at Magic Mountain, which is what they've overwhelmingly voted for. We have already 200 kids that have signed up, and like Ms. Kuli said, we really are happy to be able to give them a safe opportunity, it's very well secured and very well guarded, and the kids have the park to themselves along with a few other high schools, so we're really happy that they'll be able to celebrate graduation eve together. So thank you very much, we are very appreciative of this. We have a nice list of kids who need scholarships, and we want to make the event as fun and memorable as we can for them.
Yes, not everyone can afford to be able to go and do this, and so, this is an opportunity to provide some funds to those people, or those young people, that can't afford to do that, but really deserve a safe night as well. So, it is my privilege to present, and I won't make you look at the check, I'll tell you, a grant for $1,000 to help out with the scholarships for Grad Night. Really, okay. I have to say, it's really the members of our foundation who have been so generous and have helped us to be able to raise the funds to be able to do that, and since probably the Bank of America doesn't want to cash that, here's the real deal.
You can scan this with your smartphone and...
Why, want to try? I would. Just sign it over to Nord, it's okay.
Well, thank you, Jill. Can we get an update from the Fire Authority Battalion Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, staff, real brief tonight. Like to acknowledge two promotions that we have for Battalion Chiefs, that will be coming here to Battalion Three. We'll have Mike Schrader, he'll be replacing Gene Begnell, who retired after almost 30-plus years or so, and then also, I've been reassigned back to South County, and we have Brian Young, who will be replacing myself. Both these individuals will be coming out of our Investigations Unit, awesome guys, both are so excited to be able to come here. I was actually in a meeting with them today, and they're really looking forward to their new assignment. So, those two along with Ron Roberts will be your three Battalion Chiefs here for Battalion Three. Just a little bit more on a global note, we did have one member that responded to the State of Washington for the mudslides this week, he's part of the incident support team that's been assigned to that incident, so he made it up there, I believe it was either late Sunday or early Monday, so he'll be helping out up there. We did also pre-assign some of our canine units in case they were going to be asked to also respond as special needs, but they were able to fill that request with other canines, so we weren't able to send any of our other folks up there. So, that's all I have, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Lieutenant Gunzel, you want to bring us up to speed on the crime scene?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, just to dovetail off, the fire is doing, Captain Mark Long has decided to retire, and we were, North Patrol replaced him with Captain Jim Rudy. Jim Rudy is a former Villa Park deputy, so he's very familiar with the city, and I will bring him, as his schedule allows, to introduce him to y'all. He's excited also to come back to North, and then Deputy Brian Scott is going to move along to our Civil Bureau, and recruitment's out to replace him, so, busy time. As far as the Part One crime stats, we have five Part One crimes, one of them is a vandalism where a car was scratched right here in the Ralph parking lot. The other four, three of them are school-related, like, a lot of times they are. There's four petty thefts, one was a cellphone taken from a backpack at Serra Villa Middle School, one was an unattended cellphone taken from the locker room at the high school, and another one was a locker that was pried open, a cellphone from the high school. The fourth was a diaper bag that was taken from an unlocked vehicle, so not a bad month for crimes, but again, all crimes of opportunity. And that's all I have for tonight, is there any questions for me?
Thank you, Lieutenant Gunzel, and if you can hold it down to diaper bag incidents, we're going to have a great city. Okay, now is the time for non-agend... Now's the time for non-agendized items, so I apologize for the confusion before. If you've got something you want to speak on, come on up, announce your name and address, and talk away for a few minutes.
Good evening, my name is Frank Morales, I live at 9681 Dotson Way, and I've lived in Villa Park for nine years. I'm here today to request the help of the mayor and the city council regarding the traffic school associated with the after-school and weekend activities at the middle school. I would also request that I be added to, or that we be added to, the agenda for the April 22nd to get some feedback on what the city has done in regards to the traffic that we have around the school, the middle school. I know that this is not a problem that is new, this has been going on for a long time. In fact, today I found some notes that were going back to October the 25th of 2011, city of Villa Park, it was the old business agenda item number nine, and it even has 23 letters from the citizens that are explaining exactly what's happening today with regards to safety, with regards to security, and their frustration of dealing with what's going on at the city or on the streets. So, not knowing that, I did my own survey, and I did a survey of my immediate neighborhood, including just four streets, Mark Circle, Dotson Way, Brynmar, and Feather Hill. And I did this on Thursday, and I wanted to prepare something so that I could present to you that it's not just my opinion and what's happening with me, but also with my neighbors. And I did send the council a letter, so you know my feelings, but I wanted to get other people's feelings on this. And so, in three days, I received a number of responses back on the survey that I did. And, in fact, I was so overwhelmed with the responses that I got, I had people calling me on my cell, telling me about their frustration and what they're going through, and what's happening, and how unsafe it is, and the, and all the other problems that they're having relating to the, the school traffic. Some people having to, they have circular driveways, and they have to put planters so that people don't go through their driveway. My next-door neighbor is doing the same thing, and is having that same problem. In fact, I had a personal situation where I almost had a car run me over in my own driveway, and so, it is, it is a sad situation. Again, I was thankful for all the people that gave me the feedback and the concerns that they had, and I received emails, I even had people coming to our house to tell me about their concerns and their problems and the history of this. And I have one here that I just want to share a quick comment, because they wrote all kinds of comments on here. And there was one comment here that this person did, this is a daughter for an 80-year-old neighbor of mine, lives right across the street, and she says, "Thank you for doing this. My mom was robbed this last summer by most likely someone from the soccer activity. In July, they checked out the home and waited for her to leave, and broke in and took all of her jewelry and her cash." This is an 80-year-old citizen that lives across the street that's having problems like this. And it's, it's the people that we are allowing to come into our city, and it's okay that we have all these activities, but we need the school to provide some of the parking to accommodate this. Coming down Serrano Street is just unsafe for, for anyone that lives there and you've experienced it. I know, Brad, you have experienced it because you lived close to that, but you come down that street, and there's people opening up doors, kids trying to dodge through, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. But I'm part of the survey that I did, and it was very simple, but I asked questions like, "Are you concerned about the after-school traffic?" 100% of the people that were on the survey said yes, 100%. "Do you think that the traffic is increasing over the last year?" 95% said yes. "Have you seen reckless driving?" 86% said yes. "Have you seen illegal driving, like U-turns, stopping the traffic?" 100% of them said yes, not just one or two, 100%. "Have you seen people leaving trash?" That's 67%, and that devalues our property. "Have you seen people causing property damage?" 38% said yes, although that's a low number, that is them seeing the people doing the damage. "Is traffic causing you stress?" 90% said yes. "Is traffic, are you angry about the traffic?" 86% said yes. Can you imagine coming home from work, and you're coming down Serrano, and you have to deal with the traffic? You've already had a rough day. Do you want the city council to take independent action on this matter? 100% of them said yes, 100%. Should you try, should they try for independent action, should they take independent action? 100% said yes. Should they wait? I'm sorry?
I apologize, just let Ms. Mayor know that was five minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, but in, in the bottom line is, bottom line is that we need for the city council to help us out before there is an accident, a serious accident, that we all regret and we all have to pay for. Thank you for your time.
If there's anyone else I'd like to speak to matter, go ahead, come on up and identify yourself, and we'll be happy to listen.
My name is Mary Beth Felsen, I live at 9622 Feather Hill Drive, and I would like to echo the remarks that Frank Morales made. Are you aware, first of all, may I ask, is everyone on the board aware of this problem? Brad, I know you are, you live on, off Feather Hill. Are any of you...
I suspect that everybody is aware that there's a traffic issue there over...
Okay, well, that's good to know. Let me give you an idea of what it's like. Starting around 2:15 to 2:45, traffic stops on Sereno by the elementary school, it stops. Last, in 2011, your city engineer said, "Oh, people can, parents can stop, park, walk their child to the school to be picked up or dropped off, go back to their car and drive out." That's not what happens. We have parents sitting in the street at a deadstill, waiting to turn into the, you know, not leaving their car, waiting to turn into the high, into the elementary school drop area, pick up their child, and leave. So all traffic is dropped, is stopped for 20 to 30 minutes, dead stop, it flows out of Sereno and goes into the main street. You know, have you ever seen a traffic line up at a Starbucks window? Goes out of Starbucks parking lot, goes right into the street. That's what our community looks like, that's what we see. You cannot go past them on the side, and they have cars driving on the sidewalk, trying to get around this traffic, so it's, it's a serious problem. At 2, so this goes on until 2:45, at 2:50, the traffic again is busy because the intermediate school is getting out. Parents are driving around there. Now, most of these students, they walk home, they don't need their parents to drive them. But it's nice to stop on the way, throw their backpacks on our lawns, and they find a nice place under our trees. They sit there, wave to their friends going by, run out in the street to talk, come back in, leave their trash on our, on our lawns. How'd you like to live like that? Well, that's what it's like on certain areas of Feather Hill Drive. It's not good, and it doesn't need to happen. And then, at 5 o'clock, out comes the athletic sports activities, and those go on at 7 o'clock at night. While I drove here tonight for the meeting, there was just trash in the street. I don't know who dropped it there, maybe it was some students, but it's packed on the streets, parking on both sides. You can barely drive, and you have to drive very carefully, because it's getting dark and kids are running in between. It's not a very pleasant place, it's, it's not very pleasant on those streets. What I'd like you to do is, let's focus on this problem. I would like you to put some time on the agenda next week where you can hear not only Frank speak about the problem and me, but others, listen to what they have to say, but we would also like to hear what has the city Villa Park done to resolve this problem. And I mean, we want it resolved. No more, it's a complex problem, it's a school problem, it's our community, and it's falling apart. You hear this hidden jewel of Villa Park? Well, welcome to the Starbucks parking lot, that's what it's like. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Triver, and I live at 9682 Dotson, and I agree with Frank and Mary Beth, so I'm not going to go back over on what they've already said. One of the things that I would like to bring up is the zoning, the resident permit parking, and from what we can gather from some of the information, we know that other city streets in Villa Park have gotten some relief from, you know, the zoning and the permit parking. What we're asking for on, on these surrounding streets, Feather Hill, I think also has some restricted parking, is for Dotson to have some restricted parking. The more that the streets surrounding us are getting that, that's just pushing all that traffic, you know, into whatever streets have not gotten it. So what we're asking for is, is for that, and we had seen where there was a list of the streets up on the backside of the school, that quite a few, 26 streets, I believe, that got some kind of, you know, restricted permit parking for the residents. Because one of the things on top of everything that they've said as far as the traffic, which is, it's hellish, and, you know, everything they've already talked about, is that we don't have parking. There, you know, well, the schooling, and mainly that, I think, the, the school traffic has since, I don't, I've been involved trying to talk about that since 2005, 2006, 2007, but over and above that, what's really pushed it now is these events and the sporting that's going on. So, instead of we're doing it five days a week, and then, you know, the schools will have their, you know, events, the conferences, what have you, we now have all the sporting stuff happening, and then on the weekends. So, we're looking for that little window of opportunity to enjoy our property, and what we're now listening to instead of the PA system, the music, because these schools are not contained inside of the building. There's some of that is in an open outdoor forum. The PA system is so loud, it, it's just unbelievable, especially for the corner houses. I mean, I can be in my home, which is new construction, we've got good soundproofing, and I can still hear that PA system, "Good morning, students," calling out people's names, the music's rocking, not that I don't mind music, but like, it's, it's too much. And then now, it's even on the weekends. So that we're in our yard now on a Saturday and Sunday where we used to have some reprieve, and now we're listening to it some more. So, based off of our property taxes that we pay, our, what we assumed we would get when we moved to Villa Park, you know, the bigger lots, you know, the homes aren't on top of each other, that we would have some privacy, like some expectation of that, which, by the way, on the corners, we don't have any privacy. I've given up sitting on the front porch, because it's, it's very uncomfortable to be out there and have this many strangers and these many cars, and it's not that I'm saying anything bad about these people, but it's like, I might as well go sit on Tustin Boulevard, that's what it feels like, and then have all these people walking back and forth in front of us. It's just not a comfortable place to sit, so we've given up that, the front. And then in the back, like I said, on the weekends, now we're still hearing all of that noise, all of that traffic. So, I kind of prepared, it's just an overview file of what I've already sent, and then some additional information I'd just like to pass to the city council, it's just in a file format with a memo to review some of what we're saying our concerns are, but it just seems like it's getting worse. And, and I think Frank has a valid concern also, is that our home values are impacted by this, because it can't help but be. Who, who wants to deal with that? It's like, we love the, you know, we love the area, we love the home, but no one's gonna, no one wants to live like that. So, if we don't do something to make it more conducive, it, it's going to hinder us as far as our home values, and it's really impacting this part of Villa Park. It's not, you know, so much up on center, but the more we block, you know, the streets, it's just going to keep pushing this problem into other areas of Villa Park, so it has to kind of be the whole area. So, that's what we're saying. And then also on the crime deal, I know what, you know, the stats that we've collected, and on our street, we've had a major robbery directly across from me, still don't know how that happened when we were home, no one saw anything, it was scary that we didn't even see it, and it was a pretty major robbery. And then right next door to me was robbed, which is scary, so I don't feel like I live in a safe place. That scares me. I know people that don't even live in a small city this small, and don't see as much as we've seen on the surrounding streets in the last five years. So, that, that was all we wanted to say, and I just hope that the file, instead of, you know, continuing to email, great, and I thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you very much. Let me just briefly say, the council can't, oh, we got some more, I'm sorry.
Not on that subject.
Oh, okay. The council, as you probably know, as staff's probably advised, you can't address these issues now The council, as you probably know, as staff's probably advised, you can't address these issues now because they're not agendized. They have to go out on proper notice before we can address them. That said, you know, I think council's aware that there is a problem up there. But if, if the request is, and I'm not sure how this plays out to get this on agenda, it, there needs to be some basis or some meaningful item on agenda. Because to just come back and tell us about the problem, I don't think is going to be particularly productive. There's going to need to be some suggestions, some options as to what can be done. Jared, what happened? They want this on, on calendar, what's the, what's the process, what's the?
Well, the, the, the city council, as, as council members, you can agendaize any matter that you want. There are certain timeframes, and we did not make them for this meeting. But the council has its own policy to review the matter by the city's Community Development Committee. Um, I, I'm not sure if the next meeting's in April or May, I would have to look. Excuse me. I'd have to look whether that's April or May, and then we would process it through there. The councils, previous councils have adopted these policies, laying out the rulebook of, of how you want to operate. There's noticing procedures for every single action that council takes. And to try and get something done in two weeks, as I read in one of the emails, just is not going to happen. Um, we will play it out, it's on the agenda for the next C D C meeting. I've already informed you, the council, of that, as well as the Community Development Committee members, and, you know, we'll let the process play out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we did, and.
I'm very sympathetic to these concerns, very sympathetic to them. And I always put myself in the position of, of, of the people that are, you know, having the problem. This is a very difficult problem, and frankly, we, at this point, we don't have any tools to really address this. If you want to bring this on, I have no problem with it coming on, on agenda, but I frankly don't think it makes any sense to put it on the next agenda because there's really nothing we can do. You're going to need to address this with staff, with C D C, come up with some options, figure out what we can do. Council has authority to take action, but in this case, council, we, we really don't have any options, we don't have background, we got to be briefed, none of that exists. And I don't think that's going to happen in that timeframe. So frankly, I think it's going to be pointless to agendize this for the next council meeting. You need to go to staff and to C D C and get some concepts, some ideas, some viable options. We can address them. We have limited time, we listen to the, to the options, to, there'll be something specific proposed to deal with this, and then we can address it. At this point, there's nothing for us to address, other than your frustration over a difficult situation, which I perfectly understand. So I highly recommend that you get to staff, get to C D C, and then get this on agenda so that we can do something with it. Uh, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the issue, but unless you do that, I, I honestly don't think there's anything we can do.
Mayor, can I address that real quick?
You want to come up for a minute, but I mean, we got to get on with our calendar because.
I, I totally understand, but there were some suggestions that were given, especially in the letters that I sent you on, on what to do. Whether we uh have Serrano, uh, Serrano and Nichols, or no parking in restricted areas, whether we uh, like Feather Hill, they have parking restrictions by permit only. Why aren't the other streets around that area that way? We could address that, those are specific and solutions that can be handled. Uh, you can make one side of Serrano uh, 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 white, uh, unloading and loading by itself. And that would open up, not only that people can get through there, but it also would give peace and quiet to the residents that are facing that street. And on the other side, it could be the school, they could park. Do you know that the school has parking in the back, but they have it gated because they don't want anybody to vandalize that area? That's not fair for us. But there was solutions in there, and, and we're addressing that, and that's what we're asking to do. And as far as studies, my God, it comes back to two thousand and eleven that this was going on. So there's been studies, you have records of it.
I under, I understand what you're saying, but councils change. I, for one, have no background, and most of the people here are relative, well.
Brad?
Some are relatively new, okay? In any event, I, I just got to be honest with you, it's not going to be productive. There, I don't think there's any point in agendizing it. You've got a number of issues, and when you want to address those topics, there's going to be other sides to them. It's, it's, it's inevitable, there are going to be other sides. That all has to be addressed, we can't make decisions in, you know, in, in the abstract. So it needs to get some attention, it needs to get input on both sides, so we're informed as to what we're doing, or we can't appropriately proceed. So you really need to go, address these issues, make the arguments, come up with options, go to C D C, let the parties be heard, let them get both sides, then come up with some options, it could come back to council. Prior to that, I, I'll tell you, it's pointless, we can't make the decisions. I, I certainly can't. We need that input.
Who's the C D C?
That's the Community Development, yeah.
And, and how do we get on their agenda?
I think you're, I think, I think you're already on the agenda.
Look at the schedule and let you know.
So please understand, I'm not unsympathetic, I realize there's a problem here, there's no question about that. The question is, how do we deal with it? We can't just take it in the abstract, throw it on a quick meeting, have some people come up, throw some ideas, and then start closing streets and stuff. It may make sense, but it needs to go through a little process and get a little exposure, hear both sides. Then we come up here, we can intelligently make some decisions, and I'm happy to entertain that. But it needs a little bit of exposure and workup so we can get the full scope of it first, or it'll never work. I'm doing the best I can for you.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I would, I would actually like to see the copies of the questionnaire that you circulated. And, and I'm wondering, uh, you'll be sure to let the entire community know about the C D C uh meeting that's agendizing this particular item? Because I think it's important for everyone to know. Has the City Schools Advisory Committee met in a while?
Yes.
Have you addressed this item?
Hasn't come to us.
I, I honestly thinking that, just from my perspective, you know, it's our streets, it's their school, it's their property. So I'm really thinking that, that perhaps City School Advisory would be another good place for it to be aired out. You'll have more space too. I'm just thinking that we, we really do, I don't know that we've ever really worked hard uh with the principals of the schools or O U S D to, to provide relief. I remember a time when I first moved here, all of that back parking was open, and then they locked it all down, and they put, you know, temporary facilities out there, temporary school sites, and the nu, the parking was cut down tremendously for people who were visiting. So maybe we need to work with uh O U S D.
There, there is work being done right now.
Yes.
But it hasn't come to the C D C.
Yes.
So we're in the process of working it, so there's a lot of stuff being spoken about that we already are addressing, but we can't come to you with it until we.
Work it through.
Work it through.
And is, and is, is it going to go through uh City Schools as well?
Well, it'll go through the appropriate committee. You know, sometimes things overlap, and there's reasons why parking is closed and so on. I don't think this is the appropriate place to talk about.
I just want, I just wanted to throw that out, that it's, it's something that should be worked with this, the site, the school's site as well. Our streets, our residents, their property.
Here, here's my concern.
Impacting us.
This is not the time to, for council to make any calls on this, we can't legally do that.
Right.
All I'm trying to do, and I'm dragging this out, is because I'm trying to let you know two things. Number one, we do care and we are willing to take some action, at least I am. Number two, I'm trying to give you some direction, get some coordination, let you know what entities or agencies are involved, so that you can have a path, so you know how you can productively move forward in a reasonable period of time, and bring the parties at issue, and get your, 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 your word, your word heard in the appropriate places and get their responses, so that when it does come back to council, we have all the sides and we can make some intelligent decisions. You know, I don't, maybe even be legal limitation on what we can do vis a vis this, some of the school issues. That all has to be considered, we can't make calls. So what I would suggest you do, and I'll ask the city manager to, to discuss this with you, is can we please figure out the vehicle that needs to be undertaken, the path that needs to be followed as expeditiously as possible, so that they can bring the appropriate parties to the table, we can get the input from the affected parties, so we can review this and make an intelligent decision. So Jared, I would really appreciate it if you could counsel them sometime, when they get to you this week, or whenever they get in there. And, and even if you got to make some calls, uh, and figure out what they need to do to get the appropriate parties, so we can make an intelligent decision to bring everybody to the table. Okay? So I would invite you to contact Jared, fully willing to put this on agenda and entertain it, I know it's a problem, but we can't make a call until you address the affected parties. We find out what our options are, what our legal rights are, then we can make some decisions.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay?
Uh, just a few quick comments. Um, this problem, as, as you guys know, is age old. Um, I think it has gotten worse. Uh, it was drilled down on, I believe in eleven, as you had mentioned, Frank. It, to the point of opening up uh an entrance to Serrano Elementary off of Meats. There's been all kinds of ideas that have been floated, and this has never been able to be fixed in the past. Not that it can't be fixed today, or the, or the near future. I, you know, I really think it's a big issue, it's not an easy issue. I think O U S D, you guys need to go to O U S D and start some dialogue with them, because as you know, we don't control O U S D. It's kind of weird, it's our city, our streets, our homes, and yet, you know, we don't have a whole lot to say. We cannot order O U S D to do things. I see you rolling your eyes, Frank, but we don't boss O U S D around. They are in our city, but they're their own entity. Uh, so I think a lot of this has to go to them. Uh, the other thing is, you guys need to really look for, and you've done this, but you need to do more. We all need to look for solutions, we need, because we all know the problems there, that there's no secret, and it's bad, and we want it fixed. So what we need is solutions, we need to figure out a solution to it. So brainstorm ideas, we'll be doing it, we'll bring it to C D C, we'll bring it to City Schools. Um, I have sat down myself with the superintendent of O U S D, Mike Christensen, and discussed parking in the back of their school. They didn't like cars on the basketball courts because they have no money. The court's asphalt is thin, cars leak oil, it's unsafe for the kids to go out and play on that sports field. It's not a parking lot, it's a sports field on asphalt. I, I understand, uh, believe me, I understand. Um, it would be wonderful if O U S D would let us park uh cars back there during sport time, because sport time has gotten busier, there, you know, with, with Little League going on right now and soccer, there's so much sports going on, it is, it's a problem, there's no doubt about it. So um, I want to let you guys know that I take this seriously, uh, we all take this seriously. Um, this has been vetted before, um, and now it's going to be vetted again. So it'll go through the process, you guys need to think of solutions, we will also, we all will as a team. We want the best for our city, just as you guys do. So those are my basic comments.
Yeah, I mean frankly, you know, we can, we can limit parking on streets, but from all the uh, uh, arguments I heard, that's not going to solve all the problems, if, if even, you know, a, a significant minority of them. So, and, and that's going to create other problems. So it really does need some consideration, need to bring it back to us with some options after you've spoken with the players, so we know how to, how to address it.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt, but we cannot keep engaging from the public, there are folks at home watching on TV. I, I, I'm sorry.
You pay your bills. Thank you, sir, we understand it, and it was a good answer. We will be in contact, uh, Jared?
Yes, ma'am.
In contact, I'm sorry.
Thanks, I, I wish we could do something now, we, we just can't.
Yeah.
We just can't, so, thank you.
Um, somebody else is speaking now.
Oh, go ahead.
She has one question though that she wanted to ask, so we should let her.
Right. You can come back after this.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman, I'm Eric, who I live at ninety-one oh-two Alarito Drive in the City Villa Park. Uh, I'm not here to talk about the traffic around the schools. Uh, I'm just here to let you know, uh, and you, I'm sure you probably do, but hopefully you'll be there on Thursday night. There's a, a traveling O U S D board meeting that'll be held at Villa Park High School on Thursday night. Uh, and they'll present the master plan for, for Villa Park High School. That's it, I hope, I hope to see, I hope to see you there.
I know Brad and I are coming, I'm actually skipping a significant uh Orange County Fire Authority meeting to come to that, so.
Great.
Thanks, Eric, thanks, Eric. Okay, did, yeah, did, oh, I'm sorry.
All I'll say about the buses is when they were here, we didn't have a problem near like we have now. It goes back to the seventies, forty years ago. But nobody wanted to pay for the buses. Anyway, I'm not here for that. Uh, my name is Larry Rollison, I live at nine four nine one Henderson Way. And uh, we have a new construction project going behind this, I believe it's eighteen five twenty-two Valley. And last night, a block of homes lost their phones because they cut a cable. This morning, another cable got cut, knocked power off to Edison told me, a hundred and fifty homes. And the crew doing that work is working directly for the owner. They have no training, they don't know what they're doing, they're unlicensed. And on and on and on, I could be, I could spend hours on what, what's, what's going on with this job. They have another crew on the job that is run by a general contractor doing the framing. He's doing fine. But they continue to make mistakes, do things twice. Uh, they're digging a hole now for a pool, and the engineers' documents say the edge of the pool should be twenty feet away from the property line. If they're five feet away on the hole, it's, that's being generous. It's right in the southwest, southeast corner of that, their property. And it's right at the top of an eight foot, teen foot slope. And that's going to probably hold twenty, thirty thousand gallons of water. So if that leaks, we have a problem with water seeping into the slope. I've already complained about the basement being too close. There was supposed to be the same restrictions on how close it could be back there because of OSHA and and, and related regulations on, on sloughing off and so on. And somebody might get killed getting buried, it thinks down about fourteen feet. This new hole is not as deep, I think it's probably nine or ten. But still, we're, we don't seem to learn from uh what's going on. We're not following drawings, we're not following engineers' reports. Uh, it's all part of the permits. I don't think we have enough permit coverage. We did get our power back today at about five thirty, five o'clock. So it was for about seven or eight hours, we were without power. Our phone systems went out, which, it was, it's an A T and T line they cut. So my phones were out, everything connected to that part of the system went out, has been out till probably Thursday. We have no phones in the house till Thursday. I don't understand how we can let this go on. I don't see any visible thing where they applied for, uh, where are the underground piping in the job? There's supposed to be a dig alert, uh, all this stuff, they're not doing it, they don't know. I'm not, I'm not blaming the workers because they're just, they don't know. I'm blaming the owner because he, he's trying to act like something that he isn't. And they could have killed somebody today with, when that, when the bobcat that was in there digging cut the line. Somebody could have got electrocuted, I see, I've seen that happen. And it's not pleasant. I don't know what we're going to do about it. But I'm asked, I'm, I'm asking, uh, there was supposed to have been a, a report done by staff to get back to the council on how to, how to monitor and how to take, watch this thing, and I don't think it's happened. If not, I haven't seen any report. There's no drainage. That, that pit that's open there now for the basement is approximately fifty foot wide and a hundred foot long, right at the back of the property. And it's wide open, we had three inches of rain a few weeks ago. All that three inches of rain in that five thousand feet ended up in the bottom of that hole. So if we have, you know, thank God, we've had a e, uh, light rain so far to being, to almost no rain, but if we have some har, hard rain come through here, we could be, look at like Seattle. If you've read the, watched the newspaper, you've seen what happened in Seattle with seven inches of rain. And they're supposed to be used to the water. I don't know, like, I just, I'm so frustrated because that, I'm, I'm just so exasperated that I come down here and I try to talk to people, and all I do is shrug their shoulders. There's nothing, nothing we can do. He can do whatever he wants. At the expense of all the people, a hundred and fifty homes around him now have had to pay for his ineptitude. I wish he was here. It's not right.
Jared, do you want to mention the dig alert to the gentleman, what we spoke about? After Mr. Rollison stopped by the office today. Um, we did follow up with the contractor, and the contractor did call for dig alert. Dig alert came out, as they should, and marked the underground utilities at five feet from the property line. Contractor was digging about thirty feet from the property line when they cut the lines. So somewhere, some way.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no, no, no. The hole is right up against the property line, southwest corner.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm saying the lines were cut thirty feet from the property line. Lines were cut away from where they should've been, on the records. So it's, it's not the contractor's fault that they cut the property lines.
Well, I'm not blaming the contractor.
Sir, I'm sorry.
I'm here. It's my turn. I didn't give you any time.
Sir, excuse me. With all due respect, I sat here and I listened to everything you said. I've read every one of your letters. I confronted the city manager with the issues. I didn't cut you off at all. I really don't need you arguing with the city manager. It's, it's not appropriate. So I'll tell you what. I'll address it because I've already been through it with him. Apparently, they cut the line thirty feet, roughly thirty feet off the street, when it's mapped five feet off the street, and they did the dig alert. It appears likely that SoCal Edison has misplaced the line. It's not where it's supposed to be. So that's gonna create another big problem. And I don't know what's gonna happen to that or what SoCal Edison's gonna do. But apparently that's not their fault. Frankly, I'm told there's really not much we can do. I'm told that the, that the inspector is on top of the issues, that he's looking at the, the matter. And that we really don't have a basis for objection. And Jared, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding. So if you think there's something more than that, I would invite you to go to the inspector or contact anyone you want. But I really don't wanna sit here and get into an argument back and forth between you, the city manager, or anybody else. We've listened and if there's, if there's something we can do, we will do it. In fact, Jared, I'll just let you know, please, if there's anything left that can be done to speak with the inspector, if there's problems, if there's, if there's some violations, I, I would like to know tomorrow so that I can address it. But absent that, I don't know what to tell you. You're certainly free to go to staff. You're free to go to the building inspector. You're free to call any agency you'd like. But I'm told there's not much we can do at this point that they're in compliance. So.
Okay, but there, the telephone line that was cut yesterday runs down the, through my property down to the switchgear down on the street Henderson Way. Goes all through my property on the, next to the fence, up the slope, along their wall, and then feeds all these homes.
Well, let me make a suggest. There's nothing we can do about this tonight. I, I would, if you've got photos, comments, whatever you have showing there's a problem or violation or something that we can correct.
I do have photos, but I don't have them with me.
Whatever you've got, please address it to staff tomorrow. I would ask staff to call me if it looks like there's a problem. I'll be happy to, you know, to keep an eye on it.
Be happy to hold the end of the tape to find where that five foot was.
But there's nothing we can do about that tonight. We can't. It's not even an agendized item. And, and there's nothing we can do anyway because, because we really don't know. We don't have the information. We understand your frustration.
We have an unsafe condition up there.
I understand what you're saying, but the, the bottom line is so far, we don't have any objective basis that there's been a violation by the contractor. There's nothing before us to deal with. We listened. I suggest you go to staff tomorrow if you like. I will invite staff to contact me. I would like to have them follow up with the inspector and see if there's any issues there. And, and we'll take it from there. But the main issue that I've heard, which is the power outage, even the preliminary we've had indicates that the, that the power line was twenty feet off. They called the dig organization. They got it marked and he hit it somewhere else. So there's really nothing we can do. We gave you the time at the podium. We listened. We appreciate and respect your concerns. It, it is a problem. It is certainly not something anybody wants to go through. And what we can do appropriately, appropriately presented to us, we will do. But at this point, there's nothing more we can do. I would invite you to go there. If you have a problem with staff, you can call me if you like. Okay? But, and I've, and I'm asking staff to please look at it intently with the, with the, with the inspector. And you're certainly free to contact any other agency you want as well. But that's probably as far as we can go tonight and we kinda need to move on with the agenda.
I don't know where they hit the electrical, cause I don't go on that property. All I know is where the, I can see where the hole is from the street. And it's nowhere near thirty feet away.
I, I understand, but why don't you address that with staff, with, with the, with the city inspector, any other agency you wanna call? If there's problems, if you get into a battle over here and you think they're crazy, you're welcome to call me. You have, you know, my number's out there. But I don't think there's any more we can do tonight and we need to move on with the meeting. Okay?
I talked to the staff today whether there's any easements on that property for power lines.
Talk to staff. There's nothing we can do on this anyway. Council has no legal authority to take any action whatsoever at this point. Okay?
So when somebody dies, then what are you gonna do?
You know, sir, I can't solve the world's problems. All I can tell you is that this council has no authority to act.
We have an opportunity to stop it.
You know, I, I tell you, I, I can't argue with you more on this. We have to get on with the meeting. I'll do what we can. We can't address it tonight. We don't have the legal authority to do it.
Every time I come down, I get the same nonsense.
All right, I'll make this quick. Lori Hebro, turn to you. One eight five three two Valley Drive next door. It seems to be that supposedly people were supposed to be watching the construction going on there. Or inspectors were supposed to be there. And I'm home during the day and I do not see any of that. And it seems that it takes something to happen like this before it comes, we come back in here and tell you there's a problem there. What we wanted from the very beginning was for you guys to take extra special care and really monitor the situation. Because this owner is trying to do everything he can, any way he can. And he's probably gotten away with a lot of stuff that we don't even know about, just because he was, they were able to go out there and do it. So all I'm asking is, we need everybody to get on that and to, you know, you say he's in compliance. I find that really hard to believe. I really do. Because I look over and I see what those workers are doing and I'm cringing. And when I came home today and found out the power was out, immediately I knew, oh, but they do. Those guys, the ones that do the framing, there's no problem there. They're nice. I talk to them all the time. The other issue that we're having with that property is those trucks are parking on Valley Drive. I hear cars skidding. I hear cars honking. And I've come out there and said, you guys cannot park on the street. The way my driveway is, I can't see up Valley Drive this way. And I can't see down Valley Drive this way because it bends. So I have to put half of my car out of my driveway before I can see. And here comes someone, whoom, around the corner. And they're honking at me and yelling at me that it's my fault because I'm trying to get out of my driveway. Then a truck parks over here and blocks the completely view, which means I have to go out even farther. And the, the framing guys are good. I've said, hey, there's a car parked up there. Okay, we'll take care of it. Sorry, no problem and stuff. But every single day, one day there was at least four semi trucks on that street. And people in the morning going to, dropping their kids off to school. It's just, it needs to have a monitor. I don't know what can be done in that respect, but somebody needs to be up there. At least come in the morning, check things out, leave, maybe come back a little bit later. That's all I can say. Is you guys say he's in compliance, but I think there's a lot going on that's not, not there.
Thank you. And, and I will ask Jared to ask building inspector to take a look at this. If you wanna go to, if you wanna go to the city office and talk to them and give them some specifics, okay? So that they can address it. There's really nothing we can do at this point. But go ahead and address it with them. That's, that's the place to start. That's their job. If there's violations, if there's parking issues, they know what it is and they'll do what they can. I mean, nobody, I haven't seen a city yet that bends over, you know, to accommodate, you know, citizens like Villa Park does. And I trust you, we'll do everything we can. Go, be specific. Let's see what, what you can get done there. If it's a problem and it's something that the council needs to deal with, we'll deal with it.
Going from one dangerous thing to another dangerous thing. You know, I live next door. Next thing I'm gonna see is an explosion. I mean, that's the way it's going. OSHA was there. Now they cut lines that somebody could've been electrocuted.
I, I understand your frustration. Thank, but thank you. Are there any more non-agendized matters? Go ahead. Come on, come on up.
Hi, I was just, what you had said earlier. And so we're not spinning our wheels. Like, we didn't really understand like of the zoning and the permanent parking. Is that not something the city can do without having to discuss it with other people? Or is that, is there something more to that, that, in other words, I'd like to start working on, what do you, what do you need from us? What should we be looking for as far as the format that needs to be here in order to actually start taking the steps that you can legally, you can legally do for us? Instead of, you're, you're right, we're making these grievance lists, but we don't really, we don't, I guess, maybe don't understand. You know, we're saying, can we permit, just permit, City of Villa Park, please just permit us. Or City of Villa Park, in other words, well, we'll close these streets down and yeah, the parking would be a problem for the school. But that's the Orange School District's problem then. Cause they, right? So we're, this is how we're coming out. That's our thinking on this. It's like, well, we're trying to protect what we have and they need to come up with solutions for their problem. But in order so we don't spin our wheels on all the different issues which have been going on for quite a while, like you said, if there's someone who could help, I guess, structure a little bit of it in, in the way that you need to see it. What, what format or what jurisdiction?
But under, perfect. Under state law, what's called the Brown Act, regulates how, what the city council can consider at a specific meeting.
Right.
This has to be agendized. It has to be on the agenda in advance of the meeting for the city to take any action, right? So we certainly can't do anything tonight.
No, no, I don't expect that. I'm just trying to get so when we do come in, we're not just overloading the same issue again.
The city in addition has regulations and it also has its municipal code, which govern things like parking.
Right.
Those matters have to go through their, their due course through the city, which includes CDC, which was discussed earlier, under those regulations and policies. So that will be the first step. And then any amendments or changes to policies or an ordinance if that, if it comes to that or any other city council action, will be agendized for a council meeting. And then the council can consider it and take action at that stage. But under, basically the city's rules, everything has to go, everything that we're discussing right now has to go to CDC first. So that, that will be, related to parking, that will be the first step.
Okay, so do you need us, do you need us to do something specifically to help expedite? Or do you need information? Or is just something that you guys will work with the agenda and then Jared, I, I guess, would get with us? And in other words, give us the action items of what you want from us so that we can be proactively supporting it? And let us know like this, like you're saying, the steps we need to take so that we can push it forward.
City staff, what I, what I would recommend is to come in and talk to city staff. It will be virtually impossible to get a learning lesson tonight on what the necessary steps are. So I would recommend calling the city, talking to them, and they can walk you through the process. And that will be much more efficient than sort of going over everything tonight.
Okay.
And just so you understand, yeah, talk to them. The, the council meeting's not the place to do that. Get ahold of them during normal course hours and get it done. And just so you understand, I know your people are really frustrated. I understand that. But just so you understand, even if we took action, and we could and took action tonight, which we can't, and we did some, some of the things you're probably requesting.
Right.
There would be a riot in here at the next meeting, okay, of another group. So it needs to be done in an appropriate fashion, as bureaucratic and disgusting as it sometimes is to have to proceed in this way. You never make everybody happy, but at least you go through the process. You give the opportunities. You educate the council. We make a call and then we live with it. If we were to do something without that, it'd be a riot. You know, it just, it doesn't work.
I'm sure. I could see that.
So I apologize, but that kinda.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Just for the traffic group that's here, just a few other little comments for you guys to think of. I remember a long time ago, Serrano School was shut, closed on the weekends. No, they did not want, OUSD did not want any sports activities. While residents complained about that, some, and they got them to open the school back up. I also remember that they used to allow parking in the back of Serrano for the sports activities. There was vandalism and people were picnicking back there and having parties back there and it became a problem. OUSD closed the parking off in the back. We don't control that. They control that. The other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, you asked, well, why does Featherhill have parking passes? Half the street has them. The first half of the street has the parking, restricted parking, and you need a pass. That was there before I moved here fifteen years ago and I don't know the reason it was there. I just assume it was there because Featherhill has to deal with the elementary and the junior high. So probably that's why they did it. There's very little parking that goes up the other half of the street, cause it's too far to walk. If we were to restrict parking on Brynmar and Dodson, my guess, as I'm sure your guess is, is you're gonna move the mountain of cars down to your neighbor's streets. As Mr. Mayor said, there would be a riot here the next time. So it's a big problem. This is not easy. You guys' streets are right next to the school. That's probably why you're stuck with the school. I mean, should we move it a block away? Cause they're farther? You know, they, I don't know. I mean, these are things, I'm just telling you guys so you can think of these things. Cause we want a solution. I want a solution. And I'm gonna help look for one. I'm not just gonna sit on this. I want a solution too. So it's not impossible. I'm sure there's something, but those are just some comments.
Thank you. All right. Any other non-agendized matters anybody would like to be heard on? There appearing none. Looks like it's time to consider an ordinance amending the business licenses and I guess we've probably got some staff input on that.
So this item considers ordinance number two thousand fourteen five eighty-four, which amends article eight dash one and eight dash two of the Villa Park Municipal Code relating to business licenses. This was first discussed in January and again in February with regards to having a more business-friendly community. So as we go through these slides. As we go through these slides, the business license fee in Villa Park, to the best of my knowledge, well, it was at least the last amended in nineteen seventy-six. That is the ordinance, the municipal code portion of it. And it was enacted solely to raise revenue. Just a revenue generating system. The enacting ordinance was number seventy-six dash two forty-three and it has never been touched, never been increased, never been amended since that time. In two thousand and nine, the city council adopted what we dubbed the Business License Administrative Fee. This was again enacted to raise revenue, to monitor the rogue businesses that were out there, to monitor contractors, gardeners, to essentially keep track of who is doing business in the city. Two thousand and nine, that fee was thirty dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, as part of the user fee study that we, or it was two thousand and thirteen, excuse me, last year, the user fee study that we conducted, the fee went up to about fifty-six dollars and then we dropped it down to forty-nine dollars in two thousand and fourteen. And as we go through the slides, I'll let you know why I did that. So the proposed ordinance on the books right now eliminates that Business License Administrative Fee of forty-nine dollars for all businesses, whether you're home-based or outside the city. What it doesn't change is the licenses for peddlers and solicitors. The peddlers and solicitors fee is, the first hash mark is fifty or a hundred dollars. The code reads a hundred dollars for a year or ten dollars a day, minimum five consecutive days. So fifty dollars or a hundred. The state enacts a one dollar fee for ADA compliance. The next fee, forty-nine dollars is your business license administrative fee. And then the fifty dollars is whether or not they are required to have a city business license. So the solicitors P, P, excuse me, ranges from a hundred to two hundred and dollar, a hundred to two hundred dollars. The proposed ordinance restructures the business license tax. Now, the words are interchangeable. Call it a tax, call it a fee, it's fate's bet. To a flat fee. Right now, a couple slides, you'll see how it's structured. What the ordinance does, based on the direction that we received at future meetings, is excludes gardeners, pool and house cleaners, hairstylists, estheticians. And the reason it exempts the hairstylists and estheticians are the folks here in the town center who rent spaces. They're independent contractors working at Salon Giselle or some of the other nail salons. The salon is paying for a business license fee. And then we're collecting another fee from, you know, the ten to twenty hairstylists that are operating out of that, that salon. I am recommending that we also waive the fee for city contractors and consultants because that just comes to us. Now I have a line in there that exempts city contractors and consultants not operating from a fixed place of business in the city. We do have some contractors who operate out of the city. And I'm suggesting that they're still required to pay a license, not from the business they're providing us, but for the business they're providing. and I'm suggesting that they're still required to pay a license, not from the business they're providing us, but for the business they're providing others. The ordinance will roll all of our fees back to the nineteen seventy-six tax rates. Current fees, uh, type of business is on the left-hand side. If you're outside the city, coming in, you're gardeners, you're pool cleaners, you're, you're uh, house cleaners. The business license fee is fifty dollars. There's a business license admin fee of forty-nine and then the dollar fee regulated by the state. So you're a hundred bucks if you're outside the, outside the city. Home-based businesses are off your grocery receipts. Anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred dollars for the fee. The first year, we collect fifty dollars. Uh, the second year, your renewal is anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred, plus forty-nine, plus a dollar, so you're seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars. Interesting one are the town center businesses, TCs for town center. You have your retail businesses, uh, Wayne's Liquor, Ralph's, Suzy's Beauty Supply, The Green Pear. Their fee is anywhere from thirty dollars to eighty-two fifty, plus your forty-nine, plus your dollar, so your minimum fee is eighty dollars. The lowest fee that we collect out of town center retail is a hundred and twenty-three. The highest fee that we collect, uh, is just over two thousand dollars from Ralph's. So Ralph's' business license fee is two thousand. Your town center professional businesses, your insurance agents, uh, your tax consultants, your dentists. Um, again, gradual scale, off your grocery receipts, anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred, plus forty-nine, plus a dollar. So you're anywhere from seventy-five to one fifty. The proposed fee structure comparison, uh, on the right-hand side, the fees include the dollar state fee. Um, get rid of everything, get rid of outside the business, outside the city, inside the city, this or that. Let's just have one fee for everybody. Contractors, uh, your drywallers, your generals, your plumbers who are coming out. Uh, the current fee is a hundred dollars. We're suggesting to remove that administrative fee of forty-nine, so it would drop it to fifty-one. Delivery by vehicle, um, suppliers for Ralph's, suppliers for Wayne's Liquors, suppliers for Rockwell's. Drop it from seventy-five to twenty-four. Uh, estheticians and gardeners would go from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars to now an exempt fee, zero fee, based off the new code. Home-based businesses, anywhere from seventy-five to one fifty. Uh, if you remove the Business License Admin Fee and make it a flat fee of fifty dollars, add the dollar from the state. Town center retail, you're going from one twenty-three to two thousand, down to a hundred and one. Town center professional, seventy-five to one fifty, down to fifty-one dollars. How's that gonna impact us? Going back to two thousand and nine, which is when the Business License Admin Fee was implemented, uh, we've roughly collected sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars based off that admin fee. The license tax itself, which is the municipal code tax, anywhere around thirty thousand, we'll call it. So we get forty to, you know, fifty thousand dollars annually from the business license fees. Uh, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, it's estimated that we're gonna collect a tax of thirty-two thousand and the administrative fee of twenty-five. Now, it jumped ten grand because of that increase based on the user fee. So this year, we're collecting fifty-seven thousand dollars, uh, approximately, which represents two percent of our general fund. Um, next year, assuming this ordinance is enacted, at my best guess, we're gonna lose fifty percent of the businesses. Once we get rid of the fee for the gardeners, for the house cleaners, for the nail salons, um, and, and lower the fee for a hundred percent of the businesses out there. If we collect sixteen grand, we'll be lucky next year. Um, that's, that's my personal opinion. Uh, if we eliminate that Business License Admin Fee, we lose twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so we're, we're maybe making sixteen grand next year, on the conservative side. Uh, it's just a forty-one thousand dollar impact from what we're estimating this year. Uh, again, that's, you know, point zero six percent of our general fund budget. At that point, I wouldn't even suggest operating a program for, for that money. There's just, it just takes up a considerable amount of staff time. Uh, the timeline, if you wanna adopt this ordinance tonight, uh, assuming there's no changes, the first reading is tonight, March twenty-fifth. The second reading and adoption would be at the April twenty-second city council meeting. Then implementation, the Business License Administrative Fee is set by resolution, so we can get rid of that fee immediately. But the fee structure going from the grocery receipts to the flat fee would take effect in thirty days. Um, just allows for any appeal procedures. Um, that pretty much sums up the ordinance that's before you and I'm available for any questions.
Council have, uh, any questions of staff on this one?
I have no questions, but I have a co, I have comments.
Be my guest.
We're estimating a loss of forty-one thousand dollars in revenue to the city. Based on the last council meetings for the last fifteen, maybe sixteen months, it was estimated that we lost sixty thousand dollars in revenue from the gas station being removed. That we no longer have anymore from sales tax revenue. We've also lost a retailer scraps that was in the town center for five years. That was a sales tax generator for the city, I don't know how much, but needless to say, we, we lost it. And that's being replaced with a, um, non, with a business that's not generating any sales tax. As well as next door where the real estate office was, that's also being replaced now with a business that is not generating any sales tax also. We've also now incurred a bill that's never been incurred in the city, which is, I'm gonna call it the Dog Catcher Bill. Ten thousand dollar a year, at least right now, for animal compliance. And we're not quite sure why we're being, being billed ten grand. So, we're gonna lose sixty from the gas station, we're gonna lose some money from the retail. We have an increase in this little fund for the cats and dogs and we're willing to give up forty-one thousand dollars a year for something that nobody has complained about. Since I've been on council, I held a town center meeting, Mr. Mills was there, we had the vendors come in directly. Not one person complained about that. In addition to that, there were half a dozen meetings when we were discussing the Chase Bank, when all the vendors and all the town center came, including all of the owners. And that was never an issue, because it, it's so low. Nobody cares. We shouldn't touch this. It's not an issue. We have, uh, an individual who has been trying to rent the space next to the flowery now, since November. They were so excited when they inquired to rent the place, they came into the city and they pulled a business license. Without any commitment from the owner, without any lease, without anything. And the staff told her, you don't need a business license yet. She says, no, I want one. She still doesn't have a commitment from there, but she's got a Villa Park City, she's got a license. So, you can tell that it's not turning people away, people wanna come into the center. I say we don't change anything here, we leave it as is, we have not gone after people without business license. It's been one of those ordinances that if somebody complains and there's an issue, then staff looks into it, but we've never gone after people for it. And I say we just leave it as is, the city can't afford to lose forty-one thousand dollars in addition to the sixty grand, in addition to the expenses going up.
Thank you, Brad.
Uh, just a few comments. Um, the thought of charging a gardener or a maid or any of these types of folks, a pool guy, is just disgusting. However, it's been here forever, it's kind of on the honor system. I'm sure there's plenty that come into our city that don't get licenses, we all know that. Um, kinda sad, because we're, I, we're not making them break the law, but, I, you know, they're, they are breaking the law, but we'll never know about it, because we don't find out about it unless it's brought to our attention or something. Um, after looking at the numbers today, I had no idea that by doing this good deed, if you will, that the city, you know, we all wanted to do this, it's, we were all appalled by charging a maid or a gardener or anybody, uh, this tax. Um, after looking how much revenue we're gonna lose, I was amazed by it. And after looking at our budget, things are tight, a, as, uh, Mayor Protem Fasenelli has, has alluded to. Um, we don't have a lot of revenue generating, um, things in our city. I mean, we don't have, we really don't, if anything, things are disappearing, they're not growing by any means. And our bills keep coming in the door, they're not getting any smaller. So I, I have concerns now, where before I was all for, man, get rid of this, this is stupid, how could we even do this? Now I'm thinking, hold the bus, these fees are inexpensive. Yeah, they made, they don't make mental sense to you when you think about it, but, um, we don't have many revenue generating things here in the city. If we keep losing them, we're gonna be in trouble. Those are my comments.
Any further comments? Okay, well, I have a couple then. This became an issue, as I recall, because we engaged a firm to seek out businesses in the city that weren't paying the business license. It hit the paper and it was posed as this program that was gonna ferret out housekeepers and gardeners and charge them. And I went to a city function and no less than three people at dinner came to me, somewhat incensed, couldn't believe we were doing this and frankly, I didn't know what they were talking about. Um, they went to Brad, as I recall as well, and we had to have a discussion to even understand what they were talking about. And, as, as we looked into it, we realized that, at least theoretically, we could understand how engaging that professional would bring this about. Then we scrutinized the concept of charging housekeepers and, and we got a little troubled by it. And ultimately, we looked at this and said, eh, maybe it's not worth it, maybe he's just, get rid of this. And I frankly jumped on board with everybody else. However, having just had a budget meeting and looking at some of the increases, rec, recalling, as I recall, some of the speakers actually came up and said, we don't have a problem with it, our rates are very fair and reasonable. Um, looking at the tight finances and recognizing that this program's been around since, apparently since seventy-six and it hasn't been increasing, it hasn't been getting complaints. And now realizing that I fear we're gonna get a real budget crunch if we start cutting like this. Um, we had a five percent increase in the police budget and our little spreads narrowing, it's getting very difficult to even do anything for improvements and projects in the city. And although I have an idea about that, I'd like to discuss with council at the end, you're on the, on the council items. I have to say that, uh, um, I, I, for one, am leaning toward just letting this go. We've terminated the, the firm that we employed to ferret people out that were in violation, which is what incensed the community. And that program we terminated. But I think maybe we went a little overboard when we proposed to dump a longstanding, uh, uh, minimal license fee and particularly the way the budget's going, we're having a decline in revenue this year, expenses aren't going down. Uh, I, I just don't know that the city can afford to do this right now, so that's my concern. So unless, if anybody else would like to speak, uh...
I absolutely have a different perspective on this. First of all, this hasn't been in place since nineteen seventy-six. The business license has been in place since nineteen seventy-six and it was simply, it, they, they stated, it was a tax. It was a revenue generating mechanism. And fifty bucks is not that much and it stayed level all the way until two thousand and nine, when someone got the brilliant idea that we could charge an administrative fee because it was such an administrative burden to have people come in and apply for the business license and then process that business license. Thirty bucks, that's not too bad, right? That's not too bad. And then a few years later, we figure out we can increase it even more to forty-nine dollars. Actually, it was increased even more than that and then that was rolled back a little bit. The, the, we're trying to balance the budget on the backs of continually figuring out how we can extract more money out of businesses. And you figure a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here. And I just feel that it's government greed, I really feel that it's government greed. I don't see the situation as dire as you see it. I did not sit in on the budget session, but I think it's interesting that a budget, uh, uh, session was scheduled right before this. Because of course, staff is going to say, oh my gosh, forty-one thousand dollars, we have to protect that forty-one thousand dollars. But I'm looking at the General Fund Monthly Revenue Variance Report that Michelle provides for us and I'm seeing that, as I'm comparing the year prior revenues, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, with this year's revenues, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And I'm looking at bottom, bottom line total revenues, we're a, up, almost two million dollars up. That's what I'm showing, that's what you're showing, that's what you're showing. And then I'm seeing these huge jumps that have occurred in what we're charging in a Business License Administrative Fee, which is just a tax, it's just a tax, and then this business license. Not much more in business licenses. And I don't mind us leaving the business license alone. But if we want to, if we need to have this business license and then we say, oh, it's such a burden for us to have this business license that we've come up with, you're the one who's come up with it. If it's an administrative burden, streamline it, simplify it, so it's not an administrative burden. I was also going to suggest, why not have it done every two years instead of every year? That really simplifies, you know, the, uh, the administrative burden. It's just an administrative fee. It's just a way to rationalize and justify raising taxes on businesses so that you can have more money. And I, I feel like we are in an excellent condition, you're talking about socking another hundred thousand dollars into our general fund reserve. That didn't come out in the conversation that you all just had. But if we can afford, and I think we should, to sock another hundred thousand dollars away into reserve funds, we can easily afford to allow this little bit of, of, of relief for businesses. Particularly, and I didn't even know about this until I started, you know, exploring this. And this has been on my back burner ever since I got on the council. Because I assumed that a business license meant something. When a cosmetologist gets a license or when an attorney passes the bar, when you get your license, it means you've met certain qualifications. This business license means nothing, other than you came in the door, because the, the city required you to, fill out paperwork and give them money for the purpose of being able to conduct business. That's crazy, no wonder businesses are in so much trouble. In order for you to be able to conduct business, you have to give us money. That's insanity. And then in order for you to be able to get the license, we have to charge you an administrative fee on the license that we're requiring you to get. I, I absolutely think it would absolutely be a spectacular statement to roll back what we're charging businesses to nineteen seventy-six levels. I am absolutely for getting rid of this administrative fee, which has only been on the books since two thousand and nine. It was something done by a very clever, uh, and, uh, I would have to just say, liberal-minded, big government person who just thought that when they're running, when they're running a city, they're actually supposed to figure out how to generate revenue. And that's not what we're supposed to do. And I'm sad and sickened that this happened not too long ago and that it's actually been increased. And if it stays on the books, we can only expect it to be increased. Every time you guys run into a, a budget problem, figuring out how to get more money. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. I s, I still think that if you really look at it from a philosophical standpoint and not from just government greed standpoint, that you would also say, it's the right thing to do. And, and I'm, I'm still saying that we should, we should pass this. We should make these changes, we should be a leader and hope that other communities do the same thing.
Any other-
How does this work though?
Comments?
Well, I understand the concept, Deborah, of what you're, of what you said, I do understand that. But in order, I think the best way to serve the residents and the city is that we have to look at the city. And to take away that money to make a statement is just not what I feel at this point that we should do. If we knew that we were getting, um, another Ralph's or another market and you knew that we were gonna have that kind of income, that would be great. But looking at what we've lost and what's going, and the fact that it's not an issue, I think we just need to look at our city and that's where I stand.
No, we're not taking away money. What we're doing is not taking money from, that's what we're not doing. What we're doing is we are not taking money from people who want to conduct business.
But we're not giving it to the ci-
And what I'm, I, I still, I still stand by, if we can sock a hundred, and an, and an extra one hundred thousand dollars into our reserve fund, we can afford to not be greedy and give this relief to businesses.
But then we could only sock fifty thousand dollars away.
You know what, businesses have been, become so, almost, uh, um, they're, they're almost in a state of, of being stunned by how many dings they get and from how many places they get those dings. That they figure, when they look at what we do and, because we're a little city, a hundred bucks, geez, that is a break, compared to some of the other things that happen to them. But why should we, as their city, be part of the problem, a part of the, part of the ones that wants to take another little chink out of them? That's just crazy to me, it's wrong.
But do we serve, do we sit up here to serve the businesses? Or do we serve, sit up here to serve the residents and make sure that we have the adequate funds?
We will have adequate funds, we will still have adequate funds. And I think it's interesting that you're worried about serving the citizens when it's this issue, but when it's worried about the citizens on the streets over by Feather, Harold and Dotson- about the citizens on the streets over by Feather, Harold and Dotson, you're not as concerned, you're more concerned about the schools.
Hold on, hold on, hey, gang, hold on, hold on, okay?
Or we're not.
Deborah, Deborah, please hold on, all right? Now, now this is getting, now this is getting into a bicker, you know, picking at who did what to who, this, this is way beyond the scope of this, all right? You've both been heard multiple times, so I think we need to, I think we need to move on. I'm just going to say that I fully understand both of this, I fully understand your position and philosophically, I agree with it. On the other side of the coin here is that the city's expenses are increasing and the revenue is declining, and this is a relatively nominal longstanding established fee. Is it just grabbing money from businesses? Yes, okay? Just like every government fee that funds the entire country, state, county, city, et cetera, it, it's a revenue raising fee and I'd love to see them all go away.
We can do that right here and now.
But the problem is, that's not real, this is just, this is just my view, okay? I don't want to argue, I was going to make my, my statement here, you've both gone on and on, and then hopefully we'll bring this to a vote. The problem here is, not only do we have a desire, at least is my position, to not increase taxes and fees, which I hate, but we also have a duty to keep the city solvent and get some decent reserves in case we have some problems. Percentage-wise, this city has very good reserves in relation to its operating revenue. The problem is, this city is so small that even though we've got, I think it's a forty-eight percent reserve that we're building to from our general fund, one pipe break major could take care of that fund. So we need to keep a much larger percentage fund than bigger cities because one incident here could wipe out our fund. So when you look at declining revenues, about seventy-three thousand net this year, increasing just the police alone up just five percent, the margins are squeezing. You don't see me, I don't intend to vote for any raises in revenue, and I liked this proposal initially. This is a longstanding item, it's not been a complained about item, there were people that came in and actually testified that thought this stuff was reasonable, they have a problem with this, much to my surprise. That's my comment, I understand both sides, I don't disagree with you philosophically.
Excuse me, what people? You mean the one individual who spoke that he didn't mind paying the business fee?
There was one or two of them that came in.
There was one individual who spoke and said he didn't mind, but he was also trying to get us to rubber stamp his hero project, so I think that's our program, so I think that's maybe not valid. And this isn't longstanding, that's my point. The business license, which I think is appropriate for us to track the businesses that are in the community, is longstanding since nineteen seventy-six. This administrative fee just started in two thousand and nine, and it has been increased already, there were two attempts to increase it, but it's been rolled back. And, and every single time, is this what's going to happen? Every single time you find yourself, oh, we don't have quite enough revenue, we'll just increase the administrative fee on the businesses. And when is enough enough? When is enough too much? When the administrative fee effectively doubles the cost of a business license, that's wrong. Why should we try to make it difficult for businesses to conduct business? That's crazy. It's the opposite of what we should have, it's the opposite of what we should want. Because more home-based businesses should be opening and we should make it easy and they shouldn't be fearful of having an administrative fee dinging them. I got to tell you something, for the, for the individuals that rent those chairs down there and they're underneath, they should be, and I always thought they were, underneath the umbrella of the business that's already in the, in the town center, paying the business fee, that hundred dollars means quite a bit to some of those, those young, single working mothers that are raising their kids and cutting hair. Oh yeah, absolutely, you can roll your eyeballs if you want, but I've talked to them.
I don't know what you're talking about.
But they were, they were thrilled. A hundred dollars to them to have to pay a business license when you're, when you're only working a few days a week, cutting hair, and you're already having to pay to rent the space, to just be covered under the already existing business license, that's what, one of the things that this ordinance provides for. You know, you say it can't be done or our hands are tied, they're not. That's the problem. People keep saying our hands are tied and we don't take the action that necessary. This will work out. But if it stays in place, I'm positive that in my lifetime, we'll see the administrative fee increase more and more and more. Because every time you turn around, it costs more? No, because it's the easy way out. The easy way out is to just keep squeezing the turnip.
The only thing I have to say about this is that, can we just table this? I'm serious. I mean, obviously, there's a mixed bag here, and I think we need to take a better, better look at it first before we make any moves. Unless you all want to vote on it?
I'd like to see it, Frank, like she'd go, would someone like to move it?
I'll move it. I'll move, I'm moving keeping it.
If I could, first jump in?
Okay.
Could we please open the public hearing?
That'd be a good point.
There's no public.
That's a good idea.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to be heard on this matter? They're appearing, they're appearing not to be.
If, if you're going to continue this item, I'd recommend continuing it to a date certain so that any noticing requirements wouldn't be avoided.
I'd like to, okay, what is this? What am I reading here? I would like to move that our policies stay as is and that no change be adopted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jared, I guess you call for the vote.
Yes, motion on the floors to keep everything as is. Mayor Protem Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't like it, but I'm worried about the budget.
Yeah.
Budget would be fine.
And again, you know, if everything picks up, we can revisit this in, in a year.
Yeah, in, in, in response to the comments, it just keeps increasing. That's a whole other matter. You know, I wouldn't have voted to increase it.
We did. It has been voted on to be increased.
I didn't increase anything. I just left it alone. Okay. We've got the consent calendar, would anybody like to pull anything off the consent calendar? Items three to seven.
I'd like to move we accept a consent calendar?
Second.
Well, I guess we'll call for a vote on that.
Consent calendar, no items pulled. Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, on to item number eight, request for removal of a pine tree on Villa Park Road. Have we got staff comments on that?
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of the council. I was waiting for the presentation to come up, you should have some photos in your packet. On March twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, the city manager received a written request from Mr. Steve Mitchell requesting the removal of a pine tree in front of his house at one seven nine two two Villa Park Road. Again, as you can see in your packets, the tree is located on the south side of Villa Park Road, just east of Morrow Circle. Staff went out to the site to verify whether this was a city tree, it was verified, it's partially within the public right of way, so it still does count as a city tree. The reason for the request is that the tree's condition is leaning over onto Villa Park Road, as a result, has damaged a part of the walkway. The reason that this item is in front of you tonight is because of municipal code sixteen dash one point four, basically states that the request for a move of any tree along a list of streets, Villa Park being one of them, shall be reviewed by the entire city council. Because this is a city tree, the owner has requested that the city help share the cost, which is estimated to be about fifteen hundred dollars, plus any additional cost required for fixing the concrete. This matter was not discussed at CDC, being that it came in after the meeting of this month, or last month. Staff recommends that you review and discuss, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
I have one question. The estimated cost, is that fifteen hundred dollars total, or is that the city's portion for removal of the tree?
Fifteen hundred dollars total to remove the tree.
And that thousand dollars would be, is that correct?
Yeah, concrete's tough. We don't know how much you're going to damage when they remove and stump grind. Right now, it does not present a trip hazard, Mike Knowles looked at it today. It does not present a trip hazard in the future, if there's potential that it could. If we send our contractor out there to do a one-time repair, the quote came back at thirty-nine hundred, which is far off from this thousand. We usually do about twenty thousand dollars of concrete repair every year. If we wrap it in with that, there's a good chance the fee's going to go down to the maybe two thousand dollar mark. It's a large portion of concrete. I thought it was your smaller four feet wide, but I forgot Taft Avenue is a ten-foot wide sidewalk down there, so the concrete's pretty much doubled. It's a thirty foot by ten foot by four inch section of sidewalk that we'd need to replace.
When it says Mr. Mitchell has requested the city to pay a portion, what is a portion?
Fifty percent.
Half?
Of the removal was, was he was requesting.
Of the removal, yes.
It seems to me that if he wants this done and we approve it, he can pay for all of it, actually, quite frankly. Because the tree is not doing any harm to anybody, correct? It's just a view issue for him?
Yeah, I'm honestly not too sure. My wants removed just for...
What, Tyler?
He stated in his email, it's just damaging the sidewalk and wants it gone. And doesn't feel that it would affect the look of the street because there's another pine tree about ten feet away, so...
I saw that, but I mean, is there any, is it harming his property at all?
I wish he was here to speak on this, I...
Me too.
Yeah, I mean, there's no pool.
You haven't been told that, am I correct?
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's a pool in the rear yard. Typically, we get these requests along Taft Avenue.
Yeah, for pool.
Pine trees, drop needles into the pool, maybe it's damaging a portion of the block wall. If anything, it's our sidewalk, and we have grinded the sidewalk in the area where, where, you know, the roots have uplifted it, but at this time, it does not pose a trip hazard.
Yeah, based on the picture, it does.
And, I mean, the tree's right smack dab on the property line.
I have a question.
I agree with you, Greg.
I have a question. When are we going to be doing our next, a next series of concrete work? When is that going to come before us?
The next fiscal year. We've already exhausted the twenty thousand dollars that was in the budget this year, and Mike typically holds off closer to the end of fiscal years, just in case we need the money elsewhere. So we're looking at probably another year from now.
Is it possible to put this particular area at the top of the list?
Absolutely.
Perhaps that would be the answer, explain to him that we were out of money in that pocket of that pool of money, that bucket.
Are there any other areas that are more acute in a, in a problem?
There's so many.
There are a couple areas on Santiago, towards Meats, the path to school, we want to get those corrected, not too many folks walk down Taft. That's the only other area that Mike was making me aware of.
Another area that really is significant is down Lincoln, where the work was just done and the entire, it's a good, oh, four inches between the sidewalk and the actual curb. You know what I'm talking about, it's the worst I've seen anywhere in the city.
Yeah, that stretches of Lincoln when you're going from the curb to the street, we're not so worried about that because there's already, you know, a six foot, or six inch drop. We're worried about the path down the sidewalk when, when you're walking straight. We, this year, we spent the money along the greenbelt on the, the concrete path that was out there.
Sure.
There's plenty of sidewalk repair in the city to do. We'll never, we'll never run out of locations.
It just seems to me this isn't, this isn't a priority at the top.
Not a priority for us. It's a priority for the property owner.
But he has to get our permission in order to do the work.
Correct.
We could, within what's been agendaed, could we give him permission to do so, but decline being willing to pay for a portion of it ourselves?
Let's do that.
And if the concrete is damaged, who would pay for the concrete?
The concrete would be on the city. I mean, it's, it's, it's city property ultimately.
I understand, I just want to outline it so that everyone's clear as to who pays for what.
Well, the tree service is going to get a permit to come in and do this, right?
The tree service will get a permit to come, they already have one.
And then they'll have to pay for a business license, and then they have to pay an administrative fee.
The tree service is a city contractor, cheapest rates out there.
And removing the tree for fifteen hundred dollars now costs thirty-five hundred dollars, no.
So here, here's my question. Obviously, the reason, I assume the reason that there are restrictions on removing these trees on these thoroughfares is because some prior council or councils wanted the greenery there, and if they were going to remove them on these, they wanted it to go to permit. So I have a couple of questions. Who's, who planted these? Whose trees are these? They're consistent, there's a string of them running multiple lots, okay?
I'm not aware of it, Mike Knowles wasn't aware of it, and he's been here for thirty years, so who knows?
Yeah, because there's similar trees, it looks like, running down there, and there's a prohibition on pulling them out without city consent. So I assume the concern was that, that prior city governments wanted some landscaping on those thoroughfares, and if they're going to tear them down, they wanted some say-so on them. So it seems to me, following in that, that, in that logic, we look at it and say, you know, if that was the way they went in, is there a concern among council that it's going to be detrimental aesthetically to the city? I guess that's the first thing to look at, and then the second thing is, is there damage? Do we have any duty to remove those tree, that tree or any liability for it? I suspect council could probably answer that one.
Yeah, I'd venture to guess, sorry, speaking on that, that we planted the trees fifty-plus years ago, and the code does read that trees, you know, in front of somebody's property is responsibility for the property owner to maintain. I'd venture to guess that we planted them fifty, sixty years ago and...
Is it that particular tree? I mean, are we going to put another tree in there? Because you're correct, aesthetically, it is aesthetically pleasing to have the greenery go down there, and considering that that was something that we discussed a couple council meetings ago, that we're looking at planting trees, you know, removing pine trees and putting other trees within the city, so we do need to consider that, is there another tree going in? He doesn't claim to be any damage here, so I don't want to say, the words maybe as damage or some, there's no claim here that he has any damage. So let's not, you know, put words into...
The only mitigating factor I see is, if you look at the picture, the first picture, the aerial, it is right next to another tree, so, you know, maybe it's not a huge loss, but, you know, you hate to lose greenery, especially on that grubby Cattella Strip with all those block walls. Homeowner wants that I have some sympathy, it is in his yard, and I have some consideration for that. By the same token, it may damage the sidewalk, which may give the city another bill, so even if council were to decide to let the tree go, you know, my inclination would almost be to say, you want to take it down, take it down, but if you damage the sidewalk, fix the sidewalk, because we really kind of don't want to lose the tree if we let you take it down, we're doing it out of deference to you as the property owner, but don't ask us to pay for a tree, we really kind of don't want to lose. I hate to lose any of the greenery, but I might be inclined to, to yield to him because there are a couple of them there, if that's what he wants, but I sure don't want to have the city incur a bill so that he can take the greenery out. I'm almost be inclined to say you can take it out, conditioned upon you repairing any damage to the sidewalk. So, but I guess we've kind of gone beyond questions, we probably had to have some public, a lot of public comment, I think. So, any members of the public would like to be heard on this issue? Appearing not. Back to council, I made my two cents. Anyone else like to be heard?
What if we convince AT&T or Verizon to replace it with cell towers?
Nice.
There's plenty of room behind it.
That is so not funny.
Can I come on and you collect this tree, please?
This is not, this is not Taft, this is down Villa Park Road, and this is the back of his property and it's on the property line. He has to maintain it. You can see how it's leaning, it is leaning, and you can see that it's what's responsible for buckling up the sidewalk. And I had a similar situation on my own property, was my own tree that somebody planted fifty years ago, and I cut the tree down because it was damaging things. He's, he's asking permission to cut it down. It's split on the property line, I say we just let him cut it down. Just let him cut it down.
Several years ago, there was another homeowner whose rear yard was Villa Park Road, and the city approved a request to remove maybe two or three pine trees.
It was because of a pool.
It was because of the pool and it was actually...
Correct.
Damage, the roots were damaging the, the pool and the block wall that were back there.
And he paid.
And he paid.
I remember that one. I think he should pay, if he wants it down. I'll make the motion. I think if he, we'll have to modify this a little bit, but I think if he pays and all damages to the sidewalk, he takes it all on his own.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that's, that's precedent, actually, is that correct? Okay.
I think that was Brad's motion.
All right, I second it.
Are you seconding then, Greg?
Yeah, we need to read it back, okay?
So, so...
Motion to approve it?
Clarify, yeah, yeah.
Contingent upon...
He pays. I think the motion is to allow him to remove the tree on condition that he bear the cost, well as repairing the sidewalk or any damage which results.
Correct. Councilman Reese.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Fastenelli.
Yes.
Mayor Barnett.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we'll figure out the best way, uh, for him to pay. Maybe we, we retrieve a bond, prior to him removing it, or we'll just put something down in writing.
Okay, item nine is, uh, to consider the approval of a residential survey. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Uh, yes. This item stemmed from a community development committee meeting, um, where they suggested reaching out to the community and, and getting a feedback survey. How are we doing with the government? Um, the city's government. Uh, that was discussed at February's CDC meeting, and then the, the draft survey was returned in March. A few comments were made and it evolved into the survey that's in your agenda packets tonight. Uh, the last survey that I am aware of that was mailed to every household was, um, sent out in two thousand and eight, so we haven't had a survey in about six years. There have been some informal surveys since then, survey monkeys and whatnot, but, but nothing, uh, of this nature. Um, surveys before you for review and comment. We can add, change to it as you'd like. Uh, if, if we approve it tonight, I'll send it to the publisher to print this. Uh, and then they'll mail it out to every household in the city. Um, among them mailing it, I'll post it to the website. We'll post it to the City's E Network. I'll even create a survey monkey for this. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping to get that out in the first couple of weeks of April. We're asking for a return date of Ap- of April thirtieth, so a couple of weeks, which is doable for most of the community. Uh, and then that way, that will allow us to tabu- tabulate the responses, analyze it, return to the May city council meeting, and Michelle's going to hate me for this, but if there's any last midget, uh, last minute budget adjustment set, you know, need to be handled accordingly, we can, we can do that based off the survey. And I would like to thank, uh, Travis Walker, our newest intern who's in the audience tonight. He helped me out tremendously on the survey, so. That's why it looks all pretty.
Does council have any questions of staff on that one?
I think it's worth two grand if that's the ballpark. I mean, this is important. I mean, we work for the citizens. We need their input. So I, I like that.
I, I, I agree, but I think in light of what we just heard about the parking, we need to hold off on this a little bit.
Yeah, he doesn't want to hear what they have to say.
We better come up with some other solutions, I think, on, I, we, we can just table this for a while. This, this looks very nice, by the way, Travis.
It does look good.
So, uh, this is the kind of thing we do want to know. But it's this not, it's not the cost of, of, of developing this, it's the cost of distributing it and, and then having everything come back. Is that correct? It's, it's both, it's actually mailing this out.
It, it's mailing.
That's a thousand bucks worth of, with stamps, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Two grand, mm-hmm. Well, it kind of goes along with my thinking, the, and this was before I knew what was going to happen tonight with the, our, uh, an hour worth of public input. The best way to determine how the, whether the, or not the Villa Park residents are satisfied is whether they don't show up. When you have room and there's one after another, they're not satisfied right now with at least a couple of things. Um, in, in the past, we've gone through these things. We've done them before, and if we're lucky, we might get a six percent return rate. That's a lot of money to spend to hear from, you know, the same people that we hear from all the time anyway, because they will stop in Jared's office and shut the door and tell him what they think. Um, I would, if, if we, if we are going to do this, I would question, why in the world are we asking questions about OUSD's facilities, uh, it says matter plan, but I know you meant master plan. Um, a- and why, and why in the world would we be asking about that, since that's not Villa Park city business? But I would like to have you add a question about, uh, the no solicitors registry? Whether they're re- yep. But I, I don't think it's appropriate to ask, uh, to be using this as a vehicle to gauge citizen input on an OUSD, uh, school facilities bond measure.
I don't think it was, it wasn't put on there for the purpose of OUSD. It was put on there to see whether or not, uh, they want, residents would want an increase in their property taxes within the city. That's the purpose of it. We, it could be rewarded if you have better wording that you'd like to suggest, but that's the reasoning for it.
Are there any members of the public would like to be heard on this one? They're appearing not. Uh, I, I have a comment on this. I think it's interesting and can't hurt. It's not that expensive, and even if you get a six percent, it's probably a cross section. We don't have a hundred and twenty people in here commenting. I would, I, but if we do it, I would like to see, um, the, there's, there's the blank lines at the end. I would like to see some blank lines somewhere in here, whether it's there or elsewhere, and in big, black, bold print. Please provide your suggestions or other comments or suggestions, comment, something where it's not just check the box. They're not only invited to make any comments, but it's a big, bold, flashing thing that says your suggestions and comments here, please, so they can actually be proactive and not just sit there checking the list. And if you put it at the end, I, I think that's fine, too, just as long as it's big and bold that they can see it and you can't miss it. Or maybe you put it at the front, or maybe you put a note that says, please don't miss the section at the end that's for your comments and whatever. That's all I have on it. So unless somebody else has, uh, something on it, I would, uh, would somebody want to move this one way or the other?
Too bad, since this is going to every resident and every resident has an opportunity to fill it out and send it back to us, too bad we couldn't have used this as the fireworks vote. Saved the taxpayers' money is at the booth. I mean, but little, we already committed to them would do that, but I'm just saying, this is the same thing as them going to the frickin' booth, isn't it? I mean-
Is it? Not legally, is it?
Kind of, though.
No, not legally.
I know, but I'm just bringing up a way to save money, maybe. I don't know.
We'll probably get a better return at the polls.
Be short cutting our-
I know.
You know, not a bad idea, but maybe too late.
I, I really think we should table this for a couple of months. I, my, my opinion.
Well, you might get a whole different group of people to respond this time because there are people that are clearly have something that they want to say. Uh, and normally, it's just the same people over and over and over again. And we already know what they think. We hear from them all the time.
Yeah, we're going to have a new council pretty soon, too, so.
I guess what I'm, I'm really getting at is how can we encourage bigger participation is really what we really want to do. And that question I don't think is yet, is, that's a tough one to address.
It's hard.
I don't know how we do it. If, if we, I mean, i- it's, it's, it's very tough to get people to respond. A lot of people in this town want to be left alone. Period. They don't even want, they don't even want them, they don't want us to know they're there. So, um-
Especially the gardeners and poolmen and house cleaners.
Yeah, those, them too, but, uh-
Now that entire world-
I'm assuming you're not putting a self-addressed stamped envelope inside.
I think this, the big, bold suggestions and comments
I'm just assuming that.
Helps. It invites them to throw in there too soon.
I'm just saying, I mean, some people won't do it just because they want to save a stupid stamp.
They want to save a stamp. They want to make it anonymous. Uh, that's why, you know, I'm saying you can mail them to City Hall, fax them to City Hall, email them to City Hall, walk it in.
Yeah.
On your trip to Ralph's or to the pharmacy. I don't care how you turn, I'll go, call me and I'll go pick it up from you.
I won a, um, I think it was a twenty dollar either Bagel Me or Coffee Grove gift certificate. Because everyone who put their name and address on the survey when we, you guys last did it, I did. And I got a phone call that said they picked my name. Yes, there was a little thing on the bottom and-
Do you remember doing that, Brad?
Yeah, I do.
And I won that. I came in here and picked it up.
You know what? I think you might have been one of the three names in the pot, so congratulations.
But that's okay. I enjoyed it. And you got, and I sealed it out.
We, we did enticements. And, and that's what we got out of it. I don't think it's worth the two grand personally. I think we should take that two grand and rebate it back on the administrative fee that we're charging our businesses. That's my take on it.
I think that we need to, it's nice to allow the people who do not show up to city council meetings, which is very few that do, um, the opportunity to express themselves. If they choose not to, of course. They can't take them to the voting booth. We can't take, have them do a survey, but I think we have an obligation to at least ask them.
I just, I really feel strongly about the big, bold, please provide your suggestions and comments. I think that invites a response that a checklist maybe doesn't quite provide if we're going to do it.
No, I agree, and, and I think-
We need to do it.
And I'd even move, make that the first item, where you can either provide your comments, and if you want to keep going, you know-
That's up to you. Yep.
Tabulate the checklist, but most people, yeah, I mean, if I see one of these, I get them all the time in, in city manager's profession. I don't fill them out. It, to me, it's a waste of time.
I don't either.
Uh, but if there is an area for comments, then yeah, sure, absolutely. You know, I can take three to five minutes and jot down my thoughts and my feelings, but.
I like the format of this. Just circling the numbers, very simple to do. So, you know, I normally wouldn't want to do this, but on this one, I could just ram through this and circle numbers and i- it's pretty easy.
Travis did a very nice job.
He did.
This is probably one of the best looking surveys we've ever done.
I mean, so I, 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 it's not intimidating to me, so I'd do it.
I, I pitch these out all the time, but on something that involves my own personal community like this, I think I might send this back, and I certainly would make the suggestion if I had some. But with that said, would someone like to make a motion on this so we can figure out where we're headed?
I make a motion to-
Second.
Send it out.
Okay.
What's the motion?
Uh, the motion-
Do it to it. Accept it, this.
The motion is to-
Do it to it.
With the changes that have been suggested.
Yeah.
Correct, master, and then I'll move the other comments section up front on the agenda.
We'll add something with regards to the no solicitors registry and maybe a, a line item with how do we encourage participation?
That's the motion, so I guess we've got a second. You want to go ahead, Jared?
Uh, yes. Mayor Pretend Fastenelli.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Reese.
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly.
Yes.
Mayor Barnett. Motion carries.
Yeah, because we noted that actually they can, they can do this online, too, right? So-
Uh, yeah, I'll figure out-
So there's, there may not be any real impact with the postage.
Okay, item number ten is, uh, council member matters. Is Councilwoman Polly's action to, uh, take a look at the, uh, Southern California Veterans Cemetery Assembly Bill and, uh, consider action on that. So, do I go to staff or do I go to Councilwoman Polly on that? Councilwoman Polly.
Okay. Well, I've requested that this council, uh, support Assembly Bill fourteen fifty-three that's been written by Sharon Cork Silva uh, and has, uh, been receiving a lot of positive support around Orange County to establish a veterans cemetery in Orange County. The closest one is Clearout in Riverside. And, uh, veterans group, large number of veterans groups have been getting together and trying to convince Irvine, the Irvine City Council and the Great Park Board, that they need to preserve a portion of that, uh, and a portion of that rich military history by providing a veterans cemetery and also, uh, historical, um, monument of sorts of, 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 of what happened at that place prior to the dissolution of that, of that, um, base. I went to the Villa, or the Irvine, uh, city council meeting last, a couple of weeks ago, where they were also hearing this. There were, oh, maybe a hundred and hundred, uh, veterans that were there that had been working on this for a very long time. It was a protracted public hearing. Very protracted. Every single one of them had something to say and they had a different angle on it. I've been asked to, to support them in this effort. It was very bipartisan. I was very surprised about that. Uh, how many people were there on both sides of the aisle? And the vote came down four to one in the city of Irvine, and we just got a letter, uh, just recent, like, I think today we received this letter from Mayor, uh, Stephen Choi, uh, letting us know that, um, they're in support of this. And what we're trying to do is get enough support sent up to Sacramento that it has an opportunity to make it through the legislature there. So, because the state would have to assist us with funding and have to assist with getting federal grants in order to establish that veterans cemetery on what is remaining. And, and it's only about a hundred acres that's remaining in the Great Park that hasn't already been scooped up with other, um, requirements. Or, uh, we have so many people that are coming on board with this. I understand that Assemblyman Don Wagner is also in support of it. Uh, and will probably sign on as a co-author during the First Amendment, because there are a couple of things that have to be amended. And then I received an email from, um, Bill Nelson, who you all know is a, a longtime, um, trustee on the Orange County Cemetery District. I did not know that they had also heard this item, and they're also in support of this Assembly Bill fourteen fifty-three. Uh, the entire board has taken a for, uh, a formal action on it. I'm asking that our city council also take an action on this to support what's happening by approving this resolution.
In, unless-
Move it. Move it.
Second.
I was just going to say, unless there, unless there are more comments, I, I'll move that item if I can do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, Jared.
Want to open up public comment?
Yep, I do. Any public, I, I kind of skipped, there's nobody left, so just for the record, nobody here-
There's nobody here.
Wait a minute.
I have one person left, but, but statistically speaking, I figure the prospect is nil that she wants to speak on that. Ma'am, do you want to speak on this issue? Okay, I was cor-
I wish she would tell us why she's here so we'd know when we need to stop.
Your name's pass.
That's what I figured.
Uh, motion to approve Resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-two seventy-two in favor of, uh, Southern California Veterans Cemetery. Councilman Reese.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Fastenelli.
Yes.
Mayor Barnett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I'm sorry, council, that I, that I missed, missed that item, and you had to queue me to bring the public in. I'll work on that one.
And then you'll ensure that this is made available to, uh, Assemblywoman Sharon Cork Silva's offices. Thank you.
Next item is one that I brought on. Uh, I received a letter requesting that, uh, the city of Villa Park sign on to, uh, a, let me take a look and see what that was. Sign on to a letter of support encouraging members of the Congress, House Representatives to probably consider immigration legislation. It's been signed by a number of mayors. Uh, it looks like the letter in the US Conference of Mayors supports immigration reform. Blah, blah, blah. It's in your packet. Um, frankly, I, I, I put it on because I felt if there was going to be a city position, it should have been considered by, by the board. And furthermore, um, I'm concerned that by having more of us look at this, that we can make sure that there's nothing in here that is offensive or I, I want to make sure there isn't some policy presented in here or something that I'm naive to, since my political following is limited, uh, that would run afoul of, uh, of our, uh, general, uh, community, uh, attitude. And I frankly haven't seen anything. It seems to be pretty mundane and just let's get something done and, and move on. But there may be something in here I'm missing. Uh, so with that, I will just open it up. Council has any comments, uh?
I didn't find anything in there that was offensive.
The only thing I find offensive is that the executive branch of our government will probably not enforce any of this, and this is my objection.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see anything in here that was other than what appeared to be an honest attempt to get the Fed to act on, uh, immigration without telling them specifically what to do, and for that reason, it seemed appropriate to light the fire and tell them we would like to get things going. So I, I, it seems to me it's probably an appropriate letter to join in unless someone can find something offensive in there.
Can I make a comment? First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Barnett for bringing an item of this nature to the council for full discussion. There have been times in the past where mayors have made unilateral, uh, decisions, and sometimes, um, it's been embarrassing for the city to be listed among some of those groups and, and didn't even have an opportunity to discuss it. So I'd like to first start off by saying that. The second thing I would say is that I have the utmost regard for Mayor Tom Tate and often find myself in agreement with him. But I have some concerns about the city of Villa Park getting involved in this. Uh, because if you'll, if you'll notice, the California cities that have signed on, there are only twenty-two California cities out of four hundred and seventy-eight California cities. Most of those, uh, certainly the sizable ones and the ones that you would be aware of, are cities that have a sizable illegal immigr- immigration population. And I'm not exactly sure, um, what the full intent of this, this is. There are two, two very diametrically opposed schools of thought. And it's, it's a pretty controversial situation. And I don't know that Villa Park needs to get involved in this. I really don't think we should be getting involved in this.
Anyone else have any, uh?
Yeah, while, while I don't see anything wrong with the verbiage on it, I, I, I must agree, it looks like the majority of this is kind of from the other side of the aisle for some reason. Um, so I think there probably is some little hidden agenda in it, honestly. I don't know what it is yet. But that's just a quick comment, too.
That's the concern I had. I don't see it. But I, I had a concern. It may be part of a bigger picture that may, that we may or may not want.
It's the pressure of c- pressuring Congress to act, to embarrass Congress. And let's think about how the Congress is currently configured. So, I just, there's no reason for us to take a position on this. We've had immigration issues come before, before us, um, and, um, I, I had brought one before us that I ordered us to support what the Arizona governor was doing uh, with regard to enforcing federal law in her state, and I was told that it was not municipal business. It wasn't the, uh, business of the city of Villa Park and was shut down. And in this case, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we attach our name to something that we don't really need to do. really need to do. There's no real purpose for us to do that.
I recall, I recall that meeting, Deborah, do you remember that? And actually, I think, I, I will agree with you. You know what? It was a pretty heated council meeting when that came up, and, and the city, and the council at that time decided that that really wasn't our place at that point to do that, and I actually think we should follow.
I certainly don't have any objection to that, so there, there is a reasonable amount of resistance among council. I don't see any reason why this needs to be done, and I'm frankly, having brought the item on, I'm inclined to defer to any, any reservation or resistance. So, you know, I, I, I essentially pull my item, or, I'm not gonna move it.
I once again just really want to thank you for, you know, being sensitive to the fact that you're not aware of everything that's happening politically.
Well, that kind of goes without saying.
Well, not every mayor has had that, had that thought process, and I just think it's the right one to have.
Okay. That being said, we're on to the individual items, and I probably have another one just to throw out, but are there any, any council members have any individual items they'd like to present?
I'd like to thank our Republic Services, our trust company. We had on Saturday a compost giveaway that was very well received by the residents. They stayed open till 10:30, and the line just kept going and going. We had a few residents come back a couple of times, but we had more Villa Park residents this year than we did last year, because as I sat out there for about two hours and talked to them, it was a beautiful day, and everybody wanted to come out, actually, and, and garden.
First one I've missed.
Yeah, and we had residents coming in pickup trucks, and we had residents coming in cute little Mercedes-Benz with the dirt being put into the back of the trunk also. So it was very interesting to see the cars coming in and how the dirt was being put in it. So it was a nice day, and I thank them, they were a wonderful group of people to work with.
Anyone else?
Yes, on Sunday evening, the library had a fundraiser at the Baker residence with the MIT log, log rhythms, and this is a barefoot a cappella group that's been around for 60 years now. So, and they were very entertaining, so they did raise some money, and I attended with both my wife, and we, of course, gave money as we should. I think everyone here received an invitation, probably. And it was a very nice event, over very quick, but, and the young men were very, very entertaining. Half of them were pre-med, or, or going to med school, and they're on their spring break right now, so it was very, very nice to see that sort of activity. For the vector control, last week, we had a very, very lively meeting, but I'll go through the, the monthly items of discussion, which is now put on every one of the, and the, and the vector control gives us as to be read at the city council meetings. So I'll read this off to you. If you notice rotand droppings when you're spring cleaning, take proper safety precautions, protect yourself against the hantavirus, spray it with a disinfectant. Recent rain and warm weather is an opportunity for mosquito breeding in residents' property. Check all the containers filled with water and dump it out, let it dry out. Orange County Vector Control District is currently hiring a customer service representative, so if you know someone that may be wanting to, to go to work there, it's a very nice agency. And please visit the district website for more information on vector control and current information on jobs available. Also, we had a very interesting discussion. We had a closed meeting about budget, and most of that was got to do with the, the union that is, is forms the vector control. They effectively held, they, they gave a deferred pay raise, so they did not raise CalPERS. That was essentially what, and General Manager Hurst was given the, the authority to go ahead and negotiate with the union on behalf of the, the Board of Directors of the Vector Control. But the most time-consuming item was a lively discussion about the animal, the Orange County Animal Care. This is, this is a program called Neuter and Release Program. Instead of basically destroying cats, they neuter them and then release them back where they found them. And this, this was an hour-long discussion. It was, it's the longest discussion I've ever heard.
At vector control?
At vector control, because usually we're in and out of there in 50 minutes, but this was, it was an hour. And basically what happened, we didn't do anything with the item. But it was very well received, because a lot of people couldn't understand why, if you're going to destroy the cats, and they're, they're feral cats, they can't be tamed, and these are the ones they know that can't be tamed, but they released them back to the, because a lot of people do not want to have, see the cats destroyed. Because the rate on the cats is about 80% versus about 40% for the dogs. Because this goes back, again, to the fees we're paying to Orange County Animal Control. So that's my report.
We may make it by like nine o'clock. This could be an all-time record.
Pretty good.
Does anyone else have anything they feel like?
Yeah, I have to, I have to, because.
A compelling one?
Well, it's not that it's compelling, but I'm required by law, whether it's compelling or not.
That's what I mean, legally compelling.
It's the Faith and Business Forum. I've attended this every single year since I've been on the council, and it's actually a great opportunity to hear how business owners are faring in the state. This particular meeting was Mr. Mark Jensen, who's the president and CEO of Blue Diamond Growers. And I did not realize that 80% of the global almond supply is grown in California, and that California, its number-one agricultural export is valued at $6 billion, and it's the number-one specialty crop in the country. But he also talked about how the drought and how the state and federal water policy is hurting the business, and oddly enough, he favored some reform in the immigration policy because he relies on the cheap migrant labor workforce, but that's neither here nor there. And I did want to thank all of you and let you know, you know, Pastor Stan Bandenberg, who's a longtime member, well, he's been a longtime member of the community and has lived in Villa Park for, I guess, about a decade now. His last sermon was on March 9th, they had a big going away, and of course, you know that we presented our resolution thanking him for his service to the community with Rotary and all the different organizations he got involved with, and got the members of his church involved within our community. I wanted to thank staff for the really quick turnaround on that, and I also wanted to thank the council members for coming in, making a special trip to sign it. It really meant a lot to him, and the members of the Villa Park community who were there at his going-away party were actually very touched and very thankful that we had taken the time to do that for him. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I'd like to brief a little bit on what's going to be happening with the June primary as a result of Prop 14, if you don't mind. I think many people are accustomed to seeing, you know, partisan races, including all the different central committees, whether it's Republican, or Democrat, or Green, or whatnot. Because of Prop 14, there will not be any partisan races that will appear on the June ballot for the first time in forever. And, and we won't see those until the presidential election year will be, when we will see primary races. And so no matter what, the party, parties, let's say we have three people running for Congress, and they all happen to be Republicans, the top two Republicans will move forward in November. That's just an example, but that's how that will be impacted. I thought people would be interested, because it will look a little bit different this year than it ever has before.
I had one more.
Yes?
Just to let you know, I'm, I'd like to know if the other council members are getting letters from certain people. This, this is, this is to a group, and it's called evolve-california.gov. And basically what these people are trying to do is they're, they're looking for other ways to raise tax revenue in any way, shape, or form throughout the entire state. They even give out, this, this is from a gentleman by the name Ben Grief, and this is to reform Prop 13 in its entirety. And, but they're, they're also having other issues where they want to take small steps, like exempting from Prop 13 business properties, things like that. And I get this kind of thing all the time. Do you all get this kind of, kind of thing, too?
Those won't do well in Villa Park.
They don't, doesn't do very well. Well, I, I, I wrote back, but I won't borrow, worse with it tonight.
Well, it was good. I want to, I do want to talk about that, and Greg had actually shared that with me in his response, which was quite excellent. But, you know, what they'll, what they tend, what they do, especially with new council members, is they throw the fishing line out to see, you know, who, who are the, you know, ignorant among, among them that I might be able to lure in and get them to work with me on these projects. And there's a huge push. Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association's been talking about this, but we're seeing growing evidence of it, of them pushing to buy, they, they know they cannot get property owners to go along with the idea of doing away with Prop 13, because, but they think they can get people to be willing to stick it to the business guys. And so they're pushing to bifurcate the property tax rolls, and that's how they'll start chipping away at the protections that Prop 13 offers. And I was just really interested that they were going after Greg. They didn't, they stopped writing to me. I don't know why, but they have.
Any, anything further up here? Okay, I, I have one comment, but this is going to take like 20 seconds, because I don't even want to discuss it. I'm just going to throw it out there for council's thought and consideration, and maybe we can talk about it later. Looking at the budget, and looking at some of the things that would be nice to do in the city, without going through all this now, we don't have a lot of discretionary budget, especially if we continue to reserve for problems, which I really feel is a good idea. And I came up with an idea of a capital improvements or a capital budget assessment, nonrecourse, a nonrecourse assessment. I've spoken with three or four members of the community who frankly looked at me kind of funny and said, "That's interesting, I kind of like it." But that's as far as it went. The concept would be that the city, I don't even know if we can do it, I haven't gone through it legally, blah, 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 but the idea would be to come up with a tax-deductible nonrecourse assessment that we mail out every year, maybe it's one or two hundredths of a percent of, of property value or something. We mail it out, we make the assessment, and whoever pays it, pays it, they get a tax deduction. We build a capital projects fund to improve the city. If they don't pay it, we abate it at the end of the year, we reassess it the next year. It's nonrecourse, no one has a duty to pay it, they know that, but if they do, they paid the assessment, and maybe they get a tax deduction for it. Just something to think about, and maybe we could discuss it later, but there it is, and I don't want to drag the meeting with it.
Well, that's interesting. I mean, Megan, is that, is that something that we can think about?
Yeah, it's something we can talk about. I think if I'm, I'm following the, the idea here, that if we're talking about a special assessment, a special assessment imposed on property, it actually runs to the parcel, you have to establish a special benefit to that parcel. There's a lot of hoops to jump through, including a Prop 218 vote.
Well, you know, how it would be structured is something else, again, it would be nice to be tax-deductible, would have to be nonrecourse. No, no, no compelling assessment. If they pay it, they pay it, if they don't, it's abated at the, any unpaid assessment is abated at the end of the year. Not a, not a lean on the property, I don't want to get involved in title issues when they transfer. It would just be a city assessment for capital improvement projects, and it would be nonrecourse,